I will open the public hearing for the application of Timothy Collins on behalf of 96 Old Essex LLC for variance under sections 5.4 and 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary for relief from the minimum frontage requirement to create a second lot on an existing conforming law where the new lot would lack the minimum frontage requirement. 96 Old Essex Road, Assessors Map Number 58, Lot Number Eight in District B, filed with the town clerk on February 1st, 2024. Mr. Collins, are you going to present your application?
Yes, thank you. And I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I have both the flu and gingivitis. I'm quarantining myself, so my apologies. My co-owner, though, Mike Alden, is in the room with you.
Okay, thank you.
I was prepared to do the presentation for the two of us, so I hope you can hear me clearly.
Yes.
You do have, so our lot is 60,000 square feet and the minimum lot size in this particular zone is only 15,000 square feet. So it's four times the size of the minimum lot requirement. And the main hardship is that it is a long and narrow lot, blocking out all of the backland from development without a variance. The request, if you can see the site plan, we're actually going to request to carve 60,000 square feet into three portions. There's Lot Number One, where the existing houses will be conforming in every way. Houses right up on the street, it'll be 15,000 square feet plus, it'll conform with all the setback, it'll have the minimum frontage requirements. That's Lot Number One, completely conforming. Lot Number Two is where we need the variance. This will be a, not a pork chop shape, more like a popsicle. It'll have a long, narrow piece of land, frontage, that runs back and then turns into, you know, a big acre-sized lot where a house could be built. And that's indicated as Lot Number Two. And in fact, on the site plan, which says Lot Number Two, 42,900 square feet, that's essentially where a house would be built. And that is on a second tier. So the land kind of slopes up in three tiers. The level of the land at the street, basically level at street level, and then it ramps up in plateaus in the area where the house would be built, and then it ramps up in plateaus again in the back. There's also a small parcel that we will be cutting off. It's listed on the site plan as Parcel Three. And it's just a tiny little 2,000-square-foot piece that we would be selling to the neighbor, Kayenne Berger and his wife Avon Lander, to accommodate a large shed that is currently on our property. And I accidentally put it on our property by selling them off that piece. It takes that shed conforming. It gives them an offer from any development activity due on Lot Number Two. I'm trying to think here. So the important thing, I think, to note with regard to how this may impact the neighborhood and why we believe it'll have little to no impact is that the access to Lot Number Two would be by the existing driveway. We're not creating a new driveway. We're not creating a curb path. There is an existing driveway that has been used by the previous owners of this lot for 50 years to support their landscaping business. So that driveway already exists. They, their landscaping equipment back there, they would dump debris, leaves, brush from their landscaping jobs back up there. And we, of course, would not be using it for any commercial businesses. But the house that we propose to be built back there, we'd use that existing driveway. So no driveways in Core Perimeter are needed. And that is an existing functioning driveway. The way that we get to a 12-foot-wide driveway, which is what it would be, is that the four feet of land that, of frontage, that belonged, that would belong to Lot Number Two, would be added on to an eight-foot-wide use easement to provide the full 12 feet for that driveway. And I believe 12 feet is the, what we need to get in emergency, get going back to the property. So it would be 12 feet wide. And the two houses that exist, the slab ranches that exist there at 96 and 98 Old Essex, both are set back a little bit from the property line. And neither of those houses actually have any windows on the sides of the houses that face the driveway. This is an additional point of minimal impact. We've driven our cars and some equipment back there over this past year. The neighbors didn't even notice that we're doing that because they have no windows on that side and they largely live on the right side. Another thing to point out is that our house at 96 Old Essex is one of three slab ranches right in a row in that section of Old Essex. 94 Old Essex is to our left. And immediately to the left of that lot is a long road. It's very narrow. It looks like the driveway from the street that services, I don't know, six or seven houses up in the back there. To the right of us, 98 Old Essex, immediately to the right of them is another long driveway that leads to the back area and has four houses on it. And so for us to use a long driveway to access a residential property in the back would be very consistent with what else is happening on this street and also in many other areas throughout the town. These kind of pork chop-sized lots exist throughout the town to no detriment to the community. In many cases, you know, very stately homes exist with these long driveways. And because we're a historic town, we didn't have the benefit of, you know, having a town planner plot out our streets north and south, our avenues east and west, so that we could, you know, gain access to all the available land. We've got old streets that were cart paths and such. And so without a variance to approve these, you know, minimum frontage requests, you can't unlock these buildable lots. I know many of you were at the site visit this weekend. That's a beautiful piece of land up there, just begging for a house. And we would ask that you, as you have in the past, approve this variance to allow it to create this one-acre lot for building, for building a house. If I can just add one more piece of, I'm sure I'll add too long. I was in front of this board three years ago and with the same request. I had a piece of land and I asked for a variance to split it in half, split it into two, which would create a one totally conforming lot and one non-conforming lot. And it was non-conforming for the same reason. It lacked the minimum frontage. And you approved that variance. And since then, a house has been built there. That house was on House Hunters on HGTV. And it's a modest-sized house. It's not a McMansion. Sold for 1.77 million. And the neighbors are delighted. I mean, it was a good example of how to use a variance to unlock, you know, valued property. And this town needs housing. And what we're talking about here is single-family housing, which nobody has a problem with in this town. When you come to some of the higher-density multies, you know, and there's more conversations and discussion, when it comes to adding single-family homes to this town, it's within the character of the town and we need housing. And not on the other side of 128, I'm talking. We need housing on our side as well. I think that's it for my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the floor? Rob, do you have any questions or Mr. Collins have comments?
No.
Ryan?
Not at this time.
John?
I don't have any questions.
Do you have comments?
Well, I just think that, you know, the, this spirit of the bylaw for granting variances is not really, this is not the right avenue for this. I think a better avenue would have been, you know, through the planning board with a subdivision plan. So, you know, we're, the whole point of granting variances, we're supposed to be very strict about that. And I just don't think this is the right avenue in this situation.
I don't really have any questions for Mr. Collins at this time. I may have some questions for board discussion, but I can hold those.
John?
I don't have any at this time.
Jim?
What's the hardship?
Okay.
We haven't heard the hardship yet.
Mr. Collins, what's the hardship?
The hardship is the, is the size of, not the size, is the dimensions of the lot. And it is a, it is a long, narrow lot that doesn't provide the ability to obtain the minimum frontage needed.
But isn't that, isn't that the purpose of the bylaw?
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, the purpose of the bylaw was to have a frontage requirement so that you couldn't create pork chop lots and to cut down on the density and the amount of development that occur. My other question would be, is my understanding is the Forest Street situation was a completely different set of facts. It was not asking for a frontage of 3.9 feet. And there, it was an existing ownership. It's my understanding you purchased this in July of 2023, the same time when the survey was done, which would seem to mean that you purchased the property with the intention of subdividing it, but had the information knowing that in order to do that, you needed variance. So it's not like somebody who owned it for 50 years.
That is correct. Although I did own Forest Lane for even five years either.
I think that's my point to Jim's point. If there's another avenue besides a variance, shouldn't that be pursued before the hardship? Is there a hardship if there is another avenue to get this done? Is the question I got.
The bylaws exist so that homeowners aren't just building houses in their backyards.
Whereas rather than declare a hardship through the route of a subdevelopment, you know, subdivided or something. That's the only question I've got. Can answer that, then I'll be happy.
Well, I don't see that hardship has been established. And that has to be proven by the applicant, not by us.
Can I just make some question or comment?
Yeah, so would you just state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Mike Alden. I'm Tim's business partner.
Okay.
My only comment was there, as Tim pointed out, right within sight of our house, there's the same exact thing, long driveways that have gone back to much larger developments than what we're proposing. Same, I'm not sure the exact dimensions of the driveway, but it seems to me that that's happened quite frequently. I'm just curious if that was done by subdivision or if that was done by the process that we're proposing now.
I don't believe it would have been done by a variance. It may have been done by a subdivision. I don't know the age of those houses. I don't know when it was done. I don't know if it was before zoning existed. We have many, we do have pork chop lots in Manchester, but for the most part, they were because they existed prior to zoning. I have one next to me. And there's a little tiny house on there, next to Story High School, long before zoning went into effect. And so therefore, they were allowed to use a special permit to rebuild on that lot. I think it's different when you're trying to create a new lot that's in effect not a developable lot because it doesn't have the frontage. And there's certainly, a certain expectation on behalf of people in the neighborhood that if the lot's not developable, that it wouldn't be developed unless it went through a subdivision.
Okay, thank you. I know we did get signatures from most of the neighbors that said that they were okay with that. Now, if you know.
It doesn't seem to agree with the information that we've been receiving from the neighbors. It seems that there is a, according to the emails that I've read, and we have copies of them, and I guess they'll be introduced by the chair, there seems to be serious objection to this. So what you just said, I would take issue with.
How many signatures did we get? You personally went and talked to a lot of the neighbors and...
We can introduce that into the record.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Jim, I don't know. I've seen one email in opposition, maybe two, and...
Three.
The signatures are from one, two, three, four, five, six different, seven different addresses. Probably more people than that, I just counted the addresses. So seems to be more in support than in opposition, but these signatures are, they don't really say much about why they're supporting.
So I'll introduce that into the record. So a petition was included in the application expressing support. Andrew and Kimberly Winslow at 98 Old Essex Road, Michael Brennan at 89 Old Essex Road, Jason and Jenna Seymour at 95 Old Essex Road, Donna and Hillary Hall at 7 Andrews Avenue, Carmen Stevens at 16 Old Essex Road, Davis Bradford at 128 Old Essex Road, and Sam Crocker at 91 Old Essex Road. Mr. Crocker subsequently raised concerns regarding flooding in the area, innate derosures. The DPW engineer provided an email indicating that they must periodically maintain the stormwater system as debris accumulates. In addition, we received a letter from Michael T. Sullivan and Jennifer W. Riggs of 81 Old Essex Road dated March 19th, 2024, opposing the application, requesting us to deny it and setting forth the facts that they felt applied to not granting a variance. In addition, late this afternoon, we received an email from D. and D. Stern saying they wanted to go on record with opposition to the proposal. It was David and Daniel Stern of 106 Old Essex Road. And one of their concerns was when they purchased their houses, part of the reason for the purchase was the open space that was there on a non-developable lot. And so they weren't expecting it to develop. So with that, I think that I will see if there's anybody in the room who wishes to speak on this application. I would ask that you try not to restate what somebody else has said. You certainly can say you support what they said. But we'll see how it goes. Yes, please state your name and address.
Mary Howard, 86 Old Essex Road. I'll talk, I would like to talk about one. The house behind us was built at 82 Rear, Old Essex Road. Because so much water and ice damage, the DPW would be coming by to break up the ice. 84, 86, and 88 now have sunken-in driveways. I went before town meeting, had a special drain put in front of our house so we could get into the driveway. I see this project as a terrible water issue. It's going to be flowing down that hill. There's no drainage that I'm aware of. I spun by today and I couldn't... And in his letter, Mike Sullivan writes, "You have bylaws against such things. This is not a hardship. It's to make money." And Mr. Hatcher did not have his business in his backyard. He actually had it at his family's home on Pine Street. Mr. Hatcher built that for the love of his property. He had a pond back there, which I've been told has been destroyed, covered with soil. I don't know. But it is a beautiful piece of land, but it's not for a home. This, Old Essex Road can be described as eclectic. The houses on Andrews Ave have been there as long as I have, and that's over 50 years. The mansions up on the hill still, I don't know how they were built because a fire truck cannot properly get up them and down them. And the houses across the way, that was better than a horse's farm was going to go in there. So I think we neighbors were excited with that. But I don't see this helping the neighborhood at all. My heart breaks for Martha. She has lived in that home for longer than I have. And it's not an asset to the neighborhood. And if you had come to my house, I would not have signed. You went to people who will not be impacted by water. That water's going to flow and it's going to go across the street to Mr. Sullivan's property. I had ledge. I had to spend like $4,000 to restore my solid door from the water that pours off of 82 Rear. Ledge, you don't have.
I have, Rob.
Yeah, and you're going to, and everyone across the street is going to have water. And with the passing of Jack Shay, Jack kept that brook clean. There's no keeping that brook clean. And it's all I listen to is song punks from my neighbors. So I ask that you would follow your bylaws if you can and do not allow this. If this is not a hardship, this is a moneymaker for someone and it's going to, just another thing to hurt Old Essex Road.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir, would you state your name and address?
Andrew Winslow, 98 Old Essex. So I had spoke with Tim originally. I did sign that document, but I'd like, I came to this meeting. I'd like to withdraw my support for that for various reasons in addition to the water and the supporting the Sterns' outlook on having, you know, more houses built in the woods behind me. I also have a comment where Tim had made where I don't have a window on the side of the house that faces the driveway, saying that I don't notice that. You certainly do notice that. There's been a lot of concerns about the property at 96 Old Essex in the recent weeks that I think a lot of the neighborhood has concerns about. I know various people here are aware of those concerns. But I'd like to formally withdraw my support on this.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, state your name and address.
Martha Elder, 94 Old Essex Road. You had a walkabout of some sort.
Yes.
There was a beautiful pond behind 96. And it wasn't really a pond, all righty. It was man-made by Bill Hatcher, who lives in 96 Old Essex Road. And actually, it was for the overflow of water that comes off the rocks. And I'm a lady with the rocks and the caves, okay? And it comes, and I'll tell you, there's some beautiful, beautiful shots. When it really rains, I've got waterfalls in my backyard. And he tried, I do believe, to be sure when he filled in the pond, which he did, and he put a pipe system, okay, of some sort. It reminds me of a French drain. And Bill had a waterway, a small little waterway between my property and his property. And it was working just fine and dandy. And I will have to admit, everything is fine now, but we haven't had anything to prove, okay, that it is going to continue to work without any big rains or snow building up and what have you. So I would like to know if the conservatory...
Conservation.
Conservation. If the conservation people has looked, has any opinions in regards to this application?
That would be something that's completely separate from the ZBA. One of the requirements is, is that we can't predicate our decision on what any other board may or may not do.
Very well, thank you.
So, and I don't know whether that's in, within the jurisdiction of COMCOM or not. But if it is within their jurisdiction, then I'm sure they would be notified.
I'm sorry, but I just, I just can't support this at all. I just, I don't know what next winter's going to bring. And I've lived there for 55 years and am extremely, extremely grateful for living there and hope it keeps up. But I can't support this measure.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lisa Watkins on 103 Old Essex. I just want to support, not support the building, but support the opposition and the statements that were already made about the lack of hardship. And this slippery slope, I mean, I could cut my lawn and build a house in front of my lawn and request a variance. And that could trickle all the way down through our neighborhood. So I'd like to oppose this request.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jennifer Brennan at 89 Old Essex Road. My husband, Mike, actually signed the letter of support, but, you know, for all the reasons we've spoken about, we would also like to withdraw that support.
Anyone else in the room? Wish to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to this application? If so, please raise your hand so we can recognize you. I see David Stern. Would you please state your name and address?
Hi, David Stern, 106 Old Essex. And I'm just going on record in opposition to the variance. In August, my wife and I first heard of Mr. Collins' intentions to divide the lot and build a second home when he approached our neighbors requesting support to tap into our utilities and construct a new driveway that would join into our existing shared driveway that serves the four homes at 100, 102, 104, and 106 Old Essex. I speak only for my wife and myself tonight, but I'm comfortable sharing that Mr. Collins' vision was unanimously rejected. Five months later, I again, through the neighbors, heard that Mr. Collins was requesting approval for a new plan to divide 96 Old Essex into four lots this time and to build a second home. And again, this failed to garner any of our support. Just listening to this meeting, I'm getting new clarity on the actual plans. And I just point that out to call into question the support he may have earned from some uninformed residents on the street, which was just confirmed also. But the privacy and natural beauty provided by the undeveloped wooded area behind the home in 96 Old Essex was part of the appeal in purchasing our home. Our above-mentioned neighbors share that sentiment. And I'm pleased to see our neighbors at 94 and 98 Old Essex have just confirmed their feelings on that here. The zoning bylaws opened by defining their... The zoning bylaws opened by defining their authority and purpose. And the first two bullet points are to encourage the most appropriate use of land and to prevent overcrowding of the land. And this variance seems to be in direct opposition to those initiating directives. Section one-one of the bylaws continue additionally declaring the purpose of conserving the value of land and buildings. And I think constructing an additional home there would truly impact the value of surrounding properties negatively. I understand Mr. Collins has executed this maneuver before. And so I'd like to raise the additional concern that approval of this variance would give Mr. Collins and others a green light going forward to divide lots and build spec homes all over town for profit, violating the spirit of our zoning bylaws and degrading our historic town's appeal and character and natural beauty. So if the only hardship is buying a lot knowing what it is, I see no reason why the town would support this variance or plans for a second home at ninety-six Old Essex. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to be hearing this application? So please raise your hand. No. So then I'll send it back to the board. Thoughts? John?
May I speak?
Yes, Mr. Collins. Yes.
Am I able to speak?
Yes.
First of all, I'm shocked at the, at the neighbors. Clearly, some people have changed their minds about their support. And others, I didn't speak to. And I was unaware of such opposition to this project, quite frankly. Second, I know my Old Testament, and my name is Tim, it is not Noah. And the rain is going to rain, and the water is going to flow. And this variance application is going to do nothing to change that. It would not have. The water continues to run downhill into the street. And my development, what my proposed house was going to have, would have nothing of positive impact because of the drainage I would have put in. However, having heard all this opposition, I would like to withdraw my application without prejudice and, and just move on.
Any comments from the board on the request to leave?
Nope, just, we appreciate it.
I'll make a motion. I move to close a public hearing and at the request of the applicant to approve the request to withdraw the application without prejudice for a variance, create a second lot without adequate frontage at ninety-six Old Essex Road, assessors map number fifty-eight, lot number eight, and District E, file with the town clerk on February first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Sean second. Any discussion? Then I'll take a vote. Rob?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Catherine? So I'll need you, Mr. Collins, to sign this, unless your partner can sign on your behalf.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm his co-owner, he can sign on my behalf.
If you can just print your name and sign it. Thank you.
Miss you guys.
I thank everyone for attending tonight.
You?
Yes. I'm now going to move on to twenty-six Proctor Street. I hope you're not feeling lonely.
I'd like to ask them to come back in.
I will open the public hearing for the application of Charles William Epps III and Caitlin Connolly Epps for a special permit under sections five point four, seven point two, and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw, and your other relief that may be necessary to increase the existing non-conforming coverage by structure and impervious surfaces, and a variance under sections five point four and twelve point three point three of the zoning bylaw, and your other relief that may be necessary to allow the connection of a conforming accessory structure to the primary residence to make it accessible for a disabled child at twenty-six Proctor Street, assessors map number sixteen, lots number nineteen and twenty-four, and District E, file with the town clerk on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Globsky, are you going to present the application?
I guess I will. My name, I'm Mark Globsky, with a lawyer for Trey and Caitlin Epps. The owners of the property are with an office at Eighth Washington Street in Beverly. Sadly, the Epps couldn't be here tonight, but I think they're joining us virtually together with their architects, who also couldn't be here tonight, who I believe have joined us virtually, Garrett Goodrich and Mike Tartavel.
Garrett Goodrich is on.
They're from Patrick.
And Trey, the Epps are all tomorrow, yes.
Okay. Most of you attended the site visit last Saturday, so I think you're familiar with the existing physical conditions. The site plan before you indicates that the property is a non-conforming lot in the, in District E, which requires ninety thousand square feet. The subject property has thirty-six thousand, three thirty-three. It's a lot that was built on, what, a hundred years ago? After its original configuration, it was added on to the area in the back, where you saw the swimming pool was acquired later. And so the lot is grown, but it hasn't grown up to ninety thousand square feet. So it's a non-conforming lot. The structures on the lot are also, as I said, at least a hundred years old. There's a two-story barn garage building, which is about twenty feet from the existing house. You saw the existing conditions. The garage is non-conforming. It is currently three and a half feet from the side setback and three point six feet from the rear. What this project anticipates is the connection of the garage to the main dwelling by a twenty-foot connector that the architects can describe better than I, if need be. But by doing that, the garage building becomes a prime, pardon, a primary structure. So consequently, it is a situation that now necessitates a variance because the setback requirements for the main dwelling are higher than they are for an accessory building. So in this case, the side setback is twenty feet, and we only have three and a half feet currently. That would have been fine if we didn't connect the garage to the house. But by connecting it, we need to comply with a twenty feet. We obviously don't, and consequently, we need a variance in that respect. We also need a special permit for modifying the non-conforming house on a non-conforming lot. The house itself is currently four point seven feet from the rear setback. As you know, if you have an existing single-family nonconformity, you can make that condition even more intense without a variance. So in that case, we would need a, we would need a special permit because by connecting the house to the garage, the house becomes closer to the rear line than the four point seven. The four, the four point seven related to the dwelling portion of the improvements. The three point six relates to the setback of the existing garage. So the house itself will obviously get about a foot closer to the rear line, and that requires a special permit. Lastly, the lot coverage by structures and impervious surfaces is limited to twenty-five percent. The existing conditions exceed that. There's ninety-seven hundred and sixty-one square feet of lot coverage, which equals twenty-six point nine percent. And the improvements that we're proposing would increase that nine thousand seven sixty-one to ten thousand one oh eight, thereby increasing the lot coverage again from twenty-six point nine to twenty-seven point eight, which requires a special permit. So we need multiple special permits and a variance in order to complete the project. As you heard in the reading of the legal notice, the primary purpose of this project is to make the interior of the dwelling and the accessibility of the dwelling handicapped accessible to enable the Epps', six-year-old daughter, who is handicapped in a wheelchair, to be able to access all portions of the house and move from the garage to the house comfortably. And at the moment, that's a little easier because she's six years old, and she can be lifted and carried in the wheelchair smaller. But as she gets older, the equipment's going to be more cumbersome and heavier. And consequently, the Epps are anticipating that and eager to make the improvements sooner than later. The application itself included our rationale, which is required pursuant to section seven point five point two. And I have addressed some of that with respect to the site itself. Obviously, it's been used as a single-family property for more than a hundred years. We're not changing the use of it. It certainly has adequate frontage and distance from existing improvements without the need of any special relief. It is not going to modify traffic in the neighborhood. The design of the improvements, as you can see from the plans in front of you, is consistent with the architecture of the house. Again, Garrett and/or Mike could talk to that if need be. But I think that actually what they're proposing is actually going to add some detail to the house and make some modifications which enhance the existing architecture. As far as utilities go, it's not going to be affected by this project. It has an adequate septic system and other utilities. With respect to the variance that's being requested, unlike the prior application, I think this is a situation where we certainly meet the legal parameters for obtaining that relief. The lot itself, as you can see from the site plan, is irregularly shaped. The existing barn is pitched into the corner of the property, and it's been like that forever. So because of the relationship of the existing improvements in the lot to the unusual configuration, we can't complete this project without the relief that we're requesting tonight. And what we're requesting is the reasonable, is the minimal relief that can grant reasonable relief to the applicants. And I think that that, hopefully, that is obvious. And that, I think, is, is all I can tell you at this point. We're happy to answer any questions you have. I'm actually looking for my, I, I did spell out the grounds for the variance better than I just explained in the application. And I'd be happy to go through that again if need be.
I think I'll ask Mr. Goodrich to, to speak about the architectural design and how you came to the decision to do what's being done.
Hi there, this is Garrett Goodrich speaking from Patrick Ahern's office. The, the goal, honestly, for design was to enhance the existing characteristics of the dwelling that has been on the property for over a hundred years now. And one of the goals of our firm is to sort of breathe life back into the timeless classical architecture that New England is known for. In terms of the addition that's being proposed, we feel that the scale, it's roughly eight foot wide by twenty-foot addition connecting the main dwelling to the garage. The, the scale of that addition is de minimis in comparison to sort of the, or when you relate it to other structures along the street, along Proctor Street. So we feel that in addition to providing the necessary means to transport the Epps' daughter very comfortably and safely from the garage and to the dwelling on a day-to-day basis, we feel that that achieves the goals that Caitlin and Trey were aiming to, to do. If there are any other questions specific to the comprehensive design, I'm, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Now I'll ask Trey and Caitlin Epps if you have anything you would like to speak to with respect to the application.
You know, I think as we kind of walked through during the site visit, a lot of what we're trying to deal with, with that connection in particular, is the fact that the getting Avery out of the home to the driveway level currently requires us to either carry her or bump her down in her wheelchair down four steps. And as she grows and likely loses ability, given the progressive nature of her disease, as we know so far by our research team at M G H, who has been incredible, those devices may not even be able to do that in the future. And bump down, you know, we may not even be able to manually bump them down. So without the opportunity to have a covered space, given how much wind and rain and ice happen in our particular location, it kind of comes over the town of Manchester and whips across the harbor, that covered space becomes crucial to safely get her out of the house and us as we age and into a vehicle. And so that is where, you know, we are seeking this variance for that. As far as the rest of the opportunities, that is really about quality of life and being able to access her home and her family while at home, which, you know, should be the most successful place and currently isn't. You know, at the moment, when she can move around the, a majority of the first floor of her home, she cannot go upstairs with her, with her wheelchair, it does not fit. And so with the nature of an old home, means that the hallways are extremely narrow. So, you know, that's where we really took to, one of the most important decisions we made was who was our architect going to be? And how could they really honor the history of the house and what this street used to be? And who were the families that really built these original homes? And that's something that Patrick Ahern and Garrett and Mike really do. I mean, from the moment we've met them, and if you were to go on their website, what we've heard is when we leave, it should feel like we were never here. And so we feel like even though this connection does require a variance, that it will be done in the most respectful way possible and something that I think this street really deserves.
Am I correct that there's a lift of the connector?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Sorry.
No, that's correct. There will be with one thing connected. There will be both stairs for access as well as a lift.
Yeah, we tried to do a ramp, and that was why we ended up at the width of the connector that we did. We tried to do a ramp. It was far too long for anyone to reasonably use. And especially given the progressive nature of Avery's disease, we felt like the likelihood of her gaining strength was minimal. The likelihood of her losing strength was far higher and subsequently even potentially moving to a motorized wheelchair. And so then, the idea of having to continuously migrate up a 30-foot ramp, given the height difference of the house to the garage, just seemed silly. And that lift would make the most sense so that she could transition from the car garage into the lift up to the house level, and then everything once in the home would be zero threshold as well. So there will be a lift next to stairs. And that was kind of the need for the added width of the connector.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I would just add a couple of things, if I may. First off, I think you received some communication from most of the neighbors. Before the Epps dove into this project, they wanted to make sure that the neighbors were buying in. And they've kept the neighbors abreast throughout the course of the process. And consequently, I believe you have letters or emails from almost everybody. If you don't, I have copies here.
We have an email from Jill and Catherine Creighton of Six Asham Ave and one from Chris Poole and Georgia Pendergrass of 29 Proctor Street. I don't believe we have any others. Unless I missed them.
Okay, I talked to Mona, and she had intended to write one, as did the Wests. So I'll just see if they had a chance to send them. I know that it was, Mona was out in California where she spends some time.
I have Mona's right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lastly, I guess, after hearing Caitlin, I would say that going back to the variance matter, that granting the requested relief is going to be consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance, as we heard alluded to in the prior application, as opposed to derogating from it by encouraging appropriate use of land and buildings, by allowing various housing types to accommodate diverse and special needs of Manchester residents, and by enhancing the value of land and buildings. So I think we satisfy all the requirements. Thank you.
And you chose to apply for a variance rather than a request for reasonable accommodation?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a reason for that?
No, other than it seemed appropriate under the circumstances.
Questions from the board? Rob, do you have any questions, comments?
Nope. Seems pretty straightforward. I mean, one of the largest parts of my job is ensuring accessibility and happy-to-happy opportunity against it, do that here today.
Brian?
Excuse me, nothing.
John?
No, I'm good.
Jay?
I have no objections to it. I would like to point out, this work that's proposed, should the Epps at some point vacate that property, would not have any effect on the house or the surroundings. And I think, so what they're doing is, long-term, a very good thing. It's actually improving the property. So I would support it, of course.
John?
Yeah, I have no comment. No comment.
I think this is a thoughtful and well-laid-out project that's asking for reasonable relief.
And I would agree. I think that they, they are going to spend a lot of effort to do as much as they can to make it really accessible and do it with as little adverse impact to the neighborhood as possible.
I think they've showed a true marcher.
Okay. Is there any member of the public on Zoom who would like to be heard? If so, please raise your hand. Nope, see that? Ready for me to make a motion? And... My plan is to make two separate motions, one for the special permit and one for the vote. We'll vote on each one separately. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Charles William Epps III and Caitlin Connolly Epps for a special permit under sections 5.4, 7.2, and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief that may be necessary to allow an increase in the coverage by structures and impervious surface from 26.9% to 27.8%, where 25% is allowed, and to alter a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot at 26 Proctor Street, assessors map number 16, lots number 19 and 24 in District E, filed with the town clerk on February 20th, 2024. They sent a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The proposed alteration in the coverage requirement and to the, to the nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot is in harmony, no, sorry, will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it is located than the nonconforming structure and the existing nonconforming coverage by structures and impervious surface. And the requirements and conditions under 12.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met based on the condition that the residential structure renovation is constructed in accordance with the following plans: topographic plan of land prepared by Hancock Associates, existing site survey dated June 16th, '23, proposed site survey dated February 14th, '24, zoning board of appeals submission March 20th, 2024, prepared by Patrick Ahern, aerial photo page 2, existing exterior photos page 4 through 5, existing versus proposed exterior elevations pages 8 through 12, existing and proposed floor plans pages 13 through 18, and illustrative site plan page 19. Do I have a second?
Second.
Catherine seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote, Rob.
Approve.
John?
Approve.
Sean?
Approve.
Catherine?
Approve.
Considerable, yes. Now move on to the variance. I further move to approve the application of Charles William Epps III and Caitlin Connolly Epps for a variance under sections 5.4 and 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief that may be necessary to construct a connector with lift between the existing nonconforming accessory garage to attach it to the existing primary residence, resulting in a new nonconforming encroachment into the side setback due to the difference in the setback requirements for an accessory structure and a primary structure based on a finding that the location of the existing garage, owing to circumstances relating to the shape of the land, especially affecting such land and structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located, a little enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, by not allowing the applicants to create an ADA-compliant residence for the disabled young daughter, and that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw based on the condition the residential structure renovation is constructed in accordance with all plans listed above under the conditions for the issuance of a special permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Catherine seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote, Sean?
Approve.
Catherine?
Approve.
Rob?
Approve.
Sean?
Approve.
Sarah approves. I can write this, would like to redo it.
I'll redo it after you're ready, sir.
Thank you.
You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Projects make great sense.
Yes, they do.
Right, that was...
Which is usually the kiss of death.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, bye, everybody.
Thanks.
Well, you get to leave early.
I know.
Wow.
Earlier than I expected.
You're surprised.
Thank you.
Okay. We have minutes to approve, they're really old.
Yep.
I think I resent out the ones from November 15th and December 21st that I have edited.
You didn't.
Are people prepared to vote on those?
Yes.
So I, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 15th, '23, and December 21st, '24?
Some votes.
Sean, okay. Sean moves, and Jim seconds. Take a vote, Rob.
Approve.
John?
I wasn't here.
I approve.
Catherine? Sean?
Approve.
Jim, you're considerable, yes. We'll hold the ones for January because I have some changes to those. I kind of make changes as I'm writing decisions, that's what I do.
Did you have any questions, the comments that I sent you on that?
Nope.
Okay.
Thanks. Status of the decision's outstanding. The 49 Forrester went out for review today. I think all the other ones from January are still outstanding.
That's correct.
Who has them?
I think I got one.
I have the rest.
Okay.
And I hope to do them in the next couple of days.
Okay.
I got way behind the last couple of weeks, so. Now... Our next meeting is April 17th.
Right.
Which is school vacation week.
Yeah.
We have one application, which is 35 School Street. And it is, it's at the corner of Brook Street. And there's a little house there that's going to be torn down and then put in two connected condo-type townhouses. I had concerns with the application when I looked at it that there might be coverage requirements or setbacks or something. So I'm concerned that it might take more than one needed. And because the next meeting is during school vacation week, I'm wondering if we want to not hold a meeting in April and defer that application to May? Or does everyone want to do it on the 17th?
Let's defer it to May.
Second, I guess, check for...
It's still within the 65 days, so we can do that. I'm not sure if I can be here in New York either, so that was kind of... But am I concerned?
I remember that.
I may have to be in Pennsylvania. Okay. Anything else people wish to discuss tonight?
No.
Okay. So Gail?
Yes?
Would you contact Mr. Gaddis?
I will be happy to contact the applicants.
Okay, just let them know we're not going to hold the April meeting, that we'll hold it in May, and don't put anything in the paper, paper, please.
You have a call?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
Nothing in the paper, Gaddis.
Missed a little, missed a lot.
What?
You missed a little, you missed a lot, wow.
Yeah. You missed it, you missed it all.
You can't believe what we did when you were gone.
Oh, I can. Anything is more than what I would do if I was you.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some...
Ryan moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds, all in favor?
Bye.